The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize for being late. We have highway contracts?
Yeah, I reviewed that and Reggie reviewed it after me. She found one comment that is in there, says that, um, the comment said that it, uh, if they were called in, well, obviously they're on, it's for double pay on New Year's Eve and Christmas, they wouldn't be called in automatically anyways because they wouldn't be working if they were called in. Okay, I really don't see it. You want to write that in, you can.
I should, probably should put it in just to make sure that nobody has a problem.
But they're not here.
Well, we'll sign it with our correction and presumably they won't.
Aren't they supposed to be here?
No.
Make a motion to correct the change?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Why do we need to go on executive for that?
No, no, we're signing the contracts.
Want to have Dave start talking to us?
Yeah.
Dave?
What we have, um, that's come to my attention is an error or oversight, I don't believe that it was deliberate, in the dispatch vacation schedule that was negotiated. Um, as you may recall, the negotiations, the intent in good faith was to bring the dispatchers up to the same vacation schedule that the police officers had. Um, and somewhere along the line, it looks like from the previous contract, um, a different vacation schedule was put in place and that was accepted during that first year contract. That carried over into this contract and was again overlooked. The difference between the two vacation schedules is the dispatchers now are going to be eligible for greater vacation time at an earlier year's schedule than the officer's schedule. And again, I just point out that the, during negotiations, the good faith intent was to make them equitable. You'll see in your packets there that there are correspondence from Reggie to the union rep and from the union rep back to the State Court's office that reference the two vacation schedules being equitable. And so there's no question in my mind that they were intended to be equitable. Once it was discovered, which was actually the Wednesday morning after the board signed the contract two weeks ago, as I was reviewing it, you may recall, I wasn't able to attend that meeting that you folks signed it. I was at a finance committee meeting at the same time. But Wednesday morning, I viewed that final signed contract and discovered the discrepancy with the vacation schedule. The board's probably not aware that over the course of history in dealing with the IGPO, I've had a constant, a call of battle in that virtually every single edition or version of a union contract proposal from the IGPO has had numerous errors and things that I had to go through and correct. You may say to yourself, why was that my job to go through the union proposal and correct it? Uh, I view it as my job because I'm the guy that's got to administer these contracts over the next three years. Uh, and it's been a difficult task because there are so many things that have been wrong with the contract proposals. Just back in August, one of the proposals that came in from the IGPO, uh, had provisions that actually reduced existing benefits because the union rep had somehow through his computer pulled stuff from a 2009 contract and just carried it forward. In good faith, I caught those errors, contacted him, and those were corrected. Uh, so when this vacation discrepancy was discovered, the union rep was contacted in good faith to say, hey, look, this is wrong, this was not the intent of the negotiations, um, and we need to address this. And so the response back from the union rep was, well, it's too late, the dispatchers feel it's too late, and so that's what it's going to be. Um, so the reason we're here tonight is to discuss what the board wants to do and how you want to handle it. Reggie had reached out to town council who, um, essentially said, and there's, you'll have an email from him that goes over some of that, but essentially it says, you know, he talks about the requirements on both sides to bargain in good faith, which we all know. Uh, and he also talks about that, it's really our prerogative at this point as to if we feel that that particular issue is not in there in good faith, um, and the intent of the negotiations was differently, then it's our prerogative to not honor that portion of the contract, um, and then let it play out where it may. Uh, so that could mean, depending on what the dispatchers and the union decide to do, they could file a grievance and ultimately it could go through arbitration. So the question for the board is, um, what do you want to do? Do you want to let it go for the next three years of this contract and then correct it the next time around? Uh, or do you want to make it right and take a position whereby the good faith intent of the contract negotiation was to make the two vacation schedules equitable and therefore not honor that erroneous schedule? Um, so it's your decision.
What does the erroneous schedule give them extra?
Immediate effect, uh, it gives them vacation mile marker in years. In other words, typically it's five years, 10 years, 20 years to be a milestone year of service where you get extra weeks vacation. Uh, and what it does is give them that two years early. So the schedule that it should be on, for example, where it's going to be most affected with the current employees we have now, would be at 10 years. We'll have two or three dispatchers coming into 10-year, uh, of service, which will give them, uh, extra weeks of, of vacation. Uh, and if the schedule wasn't on par with the officer's schedule, it would take 12 years to get to that date. Um, I believe where the error originally occurred was the blending between the original vacation schedule, the personal policy manual, which was on the five-year, 10-year, um, scale, and then when, when we increased the officers to additional days beyond the five days to the seven days, uh, we also stretched that out because since we're given more days, we also stretched out the amount of years, the length of time in which they would be, then come eligible for those extra days. So somewhere in the, uh, creation of that schedule on the dispatch side, I think there's a blend of the old and the new in there and they've got overlooked.
My question is, so the police department are not on, on the vacation schedule, the town personal bylaws on?
None.
Yeah, I know, but when did that change? When did that change?
Uh, I think on the police officers, it was 2009.
And there's-
Dispatchers was 2010. Dispatchers did a one-year contract from, maybe it was 2011 to 2012, a one-year contract, that was the first contract dispatch had, and that's where it first appears in error and has been overlooked all this time, so.
They haven't been taking that time?
Uh, none of them have, uh, reached that milestone. There needs to be a reach that milestone in this contract.
So it wouldn't, it didn't matter-
Didn't have an impact, pretty much.
No one tried to take it down?
But it will have an impact. And I don't know that there was any intentional deceit on it, but there certainly is at this point in stage, a willing, a lack of willingness to recognize that that's not in good faith what we all intended.
Well, my comment is, we're looking at two different documents, obviously, um, because I see it this way, that we were in the intention, they were going to be on the same one as the police department, which is one set of documents. And somewhere along the line, that document changed. When did that change?
That schedule, vacation schedule, in its erroneous version, first appears in the 2011, the one-year 2011 to 2012 dispatch contract, the first contract that they have. And then it carry over into the current contract, which would be three-year contract to 2015. Um, and so during this contract, we will have three dispatchers that will be being affected, getting additional, um-
Getting more-
Vacation weeks.
Getting more weeks earlier.
Yeah, but let me ask you this, um, and I think this would be an unfair practice for us to change the benefit package when they've had a one-year contract and a three-year contract, means four years, and then we're going to pull the rug off from under them and change the, their benefit package for years of service, three years from now. I don't think that's bargaining in good faith either, knowing that. Either we change it now or we live with it, I think, is the issue.
What if we, I mean, just, just to cut to the chase, we all know we tried to do this in good faith, and they're all honorable employees of the town. You know, the, the union negotiator's going to try to get as much out of it as possible. But I think, you know, for, if you were to approach the dispatchers directly and let them know, look, you know, you weren't supposed to get this, this is an error.
Yeah.
I know, I'm Mike, and I'm going to ask you a question after this, but in good faith, what do you think of this? I mean, do you really want to let this lie where you're going to develop some schism between you and the officers? You're getting something that you're not supposed to be getting. How do you feel about that? Do you feel honorable about that?
It's already been addressed and they want what's written.
That's not, well, it's too bad to hear that.
Just so I'm clear, what got written into their contract is what the rest of the town-
No, both of these vacation schedules are different because of the, of because of the dispatchers and officers working seven days a week without the benefit of weekends off. That was the whole, um, you know, theory behind increasing it from five days, which is the personal bylaw allowance to this because of the, you know, the public safety workers and their seven-day-a-week schedule. So that was the theory behind increasing it by two days on the definition of a so-called vacation week.
What's the dollar amount?
Well, you're talking, you know, replacement costs. Um, it's not going to be, you know, salary, um, it's not going to affect, because we pay them a certain amount, you know, for the whole year anyway, so it's just really replacement costs. So you're, you're talking over the three years, um, probably about six weeks of vacation to cover in, um-
Well, I'm just disappointed that they, they don't see it as just being a clerical error and not wanting to come back to the table and do the honorable thing by correcting. I think that's disappointing.
Well, I, I think so too. The question is, if we give in to it now, then they're going to go-
I said we don't honor it. It was not done in good faith. It's a clerical error.
And the problem is, there's no right or wrong answer. Um, somebody want to make a motion? What do you want to do?
I, I thought we were trying to make it even across the board, and that's why we're doing this, all three contracts every year.
So in your opinion, we, we do not honor that contract?
We do not honor that section of the contract.
That section of the contract. I would make a motion as such.
And then it goes to arbitration.
Just one other point that I would point out to advise the board on. What, what doesn't affect this currently, with the current employees, is another error on that scale gives them, someone with, uh, I want to read it to you so it's accurate, would give them a maximum of, a cumulative 35 days of vacation, I think, after 25 years of service. That exceeds what the officers has, which is 30 days of, or 33 days of vacation after 25 years of service. Uh, the union rep, when contacted about this, was willing to agree that that was in error and would reduce that to make that equitable with the officer's scale, but insofar as the years, the milestone years, they weren't, um, willing to make any change on that. So point being is, there seems to be some recognition by the union that that was, there is an error there and, uh, but they don't want to honor both sides of that.
All right, we got a motion on the table not to honor that section of the contract relating to the extra milestone years for extra vacation. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? With regret, want to take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
I think we should, um, put it right out there and send a letter from our, the board indicating that we are not, it's not our intention to honor that portion of the contract, and we'd like to meet with the union reps to discuss it.
Are they legal?
Or they're legal.
There seems to be the right approach.
And that, at that point in time, we should have, if, if they agree to that meeting, I think we should ask them to have that meeting and if, to notify us in advance of the date so that we can have legal counsel here for ourselves. All right?
All right.
Thanks, David. But I want somebody to hear one more time.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Um, we're a little bit behind schedule. We now have interviews for veterans officers. I apologize, Michael.
It's, uh, Johnson, except that all the letters are different, you don't say it that way.
How do you say it?
Smachinsky.
Smachinsky.
Was it here?
I was going to say that, sure.
And I should be able to say that since I'm married to a Bajowski, but I-
It's not the first time that this happened, I'm not going to worry about it.
Would you say it one more time for me?
Smachinsky. Uh, let me give you a little training tip that I learned over the years, just say ski.
Ski, okay.
Okay, and then chin, chin, ski.
Chin, ski.
Then sma, smachinsky. And put the emphasis on chin.
Okay. If you don't mind, I'm going to call you Michael since I know that one myself.
That'll work too.
Michael, you've applied for the, um, position of Veterans Service Officer for the town of Southampton.
That's correct.
And I believe we have your information in the packet here.
Yes, sir.
We have a job description and then we have... Have you worked as a veterans agent before?
I have not.
United States Marine Corps Judge Advocate's Corps.
Yes, and I was also a law specialist in the Coast Guard. It's exactly the same job, it just has a different name to it.
Are you currently practicing law?
I retired December 31st of 2011. I was a trial attorney for 32 years.
Did you ever actually go to trial? Because Mike never goes. He never goes.
I did, I probably did close to a thousand trials in my career.
Wow. So why do you want to be the veterans officer, sir?
Well, I've done some of this type of work when I was in the service. I served as a legal assistance officer in both the Marine Corps and in the Coast Guard. And in that capacity as legal assistance officer, if you don't know what that means, I would provide civilian legal advice to active-duty military, reserves, National Guard, retirees, independents. And during the course of that period, um, I would oftentimes see veterans, retired folks, and they would want to know various things about their, what veterans' benefits accrued to them. So I have given advice in those particular areas. It wasn't full-time, I'm going to admit that, but it was quite often. And then when I was in the Coast Guard during Desert Storm, one of my jobs was to prepare active-duty and reservists who were going overseas with wills, powers of attorney, and what rights they had when they came back. For instance, reemployment rights, burial rights, um, things like that. So again, I've, I've had some experience there.
Do you have any experience with the GI Bill with vets?
I'm sorry?
The GI Bill?
Um, I, I really didn't, although I had to be somewhat familiar with, it's called the Montgomery GI Bill, as I recall, and, um, haven't talked about it in a very long time, but at that point in time, I, I had some familiarity with it.
The only reason I ask, I know a lot of the servicemen that's coming back in this area have opted to use that, and a lot of times they, they're getting good information, but sometimes they want additional information.
Right.
I was wondering, you know, how much you had of that, you know?
Um, I just know that, as I recall from that particular bill, um, part of it depends on how much service you've put in, determines how much money you get. Um, I was also surprised, uh, to find out that people who received an other-than-honorable discharge, which is not a really good discharge, is actually, they're actually eligible for GI, um, benefits, much to my surprise. I, you know, when I first went into service, anything like that, the dishonorable discharge or bad-don-bad discharge under, other than honorable, you wouldn't get anything, but I know that that has changed too. So, um, a lot of those designators, I'm pretty familiar with just because I had to as a judge advocate.
Well, just to be clear, this is a part-time position, I'm just looking, we have a bike, weekly stipend of $270 a week. Um, we have a very nice office on the second floor of this building.
Probably a quiet office.
Yeah. Lot better than the, when we were in the old building, the other building, you met people in the hallway. Um, anybody else? Question?
Obviously, you're not doing this for money, I would assume, or are you? I just-
No, no, I don't, I have, I get a, uh, I get a military pension at this point in time. I have some investment income as well, and, um, I'll be getting social security later on this year. So, and my wife is also retired and, uh, so, you know, financially, I'm okay. I'm, uh, not doing it for that purpose. I've always had an interest in the military, in addition to which is not on, on the resume. My father was a career Air Force officer, so I grew up in the service and then I spent my, uh, my adult life basically in the service. So I have an interest in that particular area. I also feel that, uh, I have some pretty good people skills because I've had to deal with clients over the years. And, uh, you know, people will come into you and, uh, they'll have a problem, but even they don't know how to articulate it. And so it takes some skill sometimes to kind of figure out what exactly it is that they're looking for. Um, it sounds easy, but it's really not sometimes. And I think that that's something else that I can unders, or I can discern. I can also provide some other bits of information that doesn't just apply to being a veterans agent, you know? Somebody comes in and they, uh, they're talking about financial benefits and things like that. As you see in my resume, I was also a bankruptcy expert for a number of years, you know? Um, I'm sure people will come in, as they did when I was a legal assistance officer, you know, and they would ask me a variety of questions other than just the one that they were coming to see me about, and I can talk about those things as well. So, um, I'm hoping that if they, if they ask me that, I'm probably pretty well-versed in a lot of areas of law.
Um, I know a lot of people don't want to talk about it, but I have some experience, and it's not direct experience, I have experience with my wife, who, um, one day a week, she cooks at a homeless shelter, and I was surprised to find out over the last several, eight years that most of these homeless people are vets, meaning assistants.
That's, that is a pretty significant problem, yes.
Yes, and, uh, she's dealt with soldiers without walls, um, in Leeds Hospital over here quite a bit. And are these things that, I mean, I'm sure you're familiar with it, that happen there, but do you have any personal contact with, you know, maybe dealing with people that are homeless, that are vets, that need to get more assistance?
Well, what I can tell you is, I haven't had a lot of, um, contact with homeless vets, but, um, when I was practicing attorney, um, you'll see on my resume that I did parent protection law, which is child abuse and neglect cases in the juvenile court system. And I frequently dealt with families and individuals that were homeless. Um, so I'm familiar with what the state resources are aside from military benefits, uh, you know, for homelessness. Um, as far as what the military has to offer for homeless veterans, um, I haven't had a lot to do with that, although I did have a particular case in which a mother was homeless and we did send her over to the VA because, and they did provide a place for her to stay, and she did get some, she did get some money for that. I, I didn't know all the specifics of it at the time because I didn't really, she was not my client, but I was involved.
And I know dealing with certain people, a lot of their private life is, they like to keep it private.
Yep.
It's very difficult for them to express themselves sometimes. And I do think that whoever our agent is going to come across some of these issues, and I'm just concerned they don't handle it properly, that's all.
Well, I mean, you have the VA, you have the soldiers home.
Mm-hmm.
I happen to know John O'Connor, who's the veterans agent over East Hampton, pretty well. I've known him for a number of years. So what I don't know quite yet, I expect I could probably find out pretty quickly because I do know people in all those different offices.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Um, thank you very much. Um, we are going, I think our timeline for making a decision on this, Reggie, is-
I have 12 weeks from January 1st, January 2nd.
It's not going to go that long. What's our next meeting?
Next week.
Oh, okay. So I think by next week, we'll probably-
Uh, we don't, don't say that because we have-
We have another issue.
We have another issue.
Sorry about that. I'm, there's another issue I don't know anything about.
Well, we will bring another issue up right now, then. We will, we have a person who applied for the position, or wants to apply for the position, who is currently on active duty overseas, and he wants the opportunity to come back sometime in February, and, and either he wants to do it by, he wants to do it by phone or in the alternative, if we would grant an extension, so that he has the opportunity to come back. So we have to discuss that, but just to keep everybody advised as to what happened to the timeline.
Thank you, Michael, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Um, my own feeling on that is I like to do it face-to-face and try to give him the time to come in front of us.
Oh, no, I just, I didn't know, I didn't know about the special-
No, 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 he called and asked, he, his request was if, to keep, he wants to apply for it, that we would do it over the phone.
Can we do it on Skype?
Conference.
He's overseas.
Um, yeah.
But he could be back February.
He could be back in February.
We'll get Skype.
Yeah, good. So the question became, do we want to wait for him to come back, or do you want to do it via some electronic means? If we go to do it, some electronic means, I think we need to check to make sure-
Do you have his CV anywhere? Which one, which one are we talking about?
He's not on your list because you had to determine what you would like to do.
Well, I think we should look at a CV if, you know, there's certain qualifications we definitely are interested in, and I think that would be the first step. We may not have all the qualifications that we need, so, regardless of where he is currently.
Well, the qualifications are in, are in the job description.
I just want to see what he has. Who's next?
Paul Neville. Did I get that right? Good evening, Mr. Neville.
Thank you.
Hi, Paul. Welcome to Southampton.
Thank you.
You had a little bit of a trip, a little bit of a trip down from Irving.
How are the road conditions up in Irving right now?
Okay, right now.
Right now?
Yeah.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Well, I, uh, just recently, past few weeks, retired from the VA after working with them for, including my military time, 41 years. And I had a rewarding career with the VA, I enjoyed it very much. Uh, this year, they started pulling me into Boston twice a month and, uh, it was a little more, more than I could handle, and, uh, so that was the end. I told them I would retire unless they could relieve me of that assignment, and they didn't want to do that, and so, uh, a few weeks ago, I did retire, the end of the year.
Excuse me, go ahead.
Like I say, I enjoyed working for the VA for all the time that I did.
And you have extensive experience with the VA?
Yep. I know quite a bit about the VA benefits as a result of-
I would, just reading your resume, it would appear that way.
Right. I'm not too well-versed on the Chapter 115. I know it's a benefits program by the state and, uh, pick up the slack for veterans who are in need. Uh, a lot of times, I'd, I'd file a claim for pension for somebody and then, uh, under Chapter 115, they were eligible for a little more money from the state or the town. I've never been involved in the administration of the, the state benefit.
Pick work, pick work, pick work.
Yeah, I imagine.
Um, I'm just looking at his resume and, I mean, the amount of experience with the VA is kind of overwhelming, I don't know where to go with it.
Where did you grow up?
I, I was out base, I, uh, lived here in Weston, Mass, and I was out of the regional office in Boston.
Where'd you go to high school?
Bedford, Mass.
Oh.
Yep.
So you're, are you familiar with the Springs Road VA?
Yes, yeah. For a while, I was assigned there, which is plus.
Interesting.
I was glad to be back in my hometown.
The only thing I have to say is a trek down from Irving, down to here.
Yeah, uh, I had to make a few stops on the way down here, otherwise I was going to clock it, I'm going to clock it on the way home and see how far it is. How many hours is it, the job?
It's, it's an eight-hour required job.
Minimum.
Minimum of eight hours a week.
Eight hours a week?
Yes.
Yeah.
And you, you might have to go to veterans homes and interview.
Right.
You know, it's usually at your discretion, but there's, sometimes the people can't come in. come in, they need to, you know, you need to go to them.
Yeah.
And I know that some days it's eight or nine hours, and other days it can be longer, you know? And sometimes you have to be flexible enough to meet with these, some of these veterans coming in at different hours than set times.
Right.
And I, I, it stays through your resume, you've had a lot of experience with veterans and probably some of the homeless people too, with the soldiers.
Oh, yeah. My most recent assignment was at North Hampton, and a lot of people from the homeless shelter there would come over and see me.
Now, what is it, Soldiers On, that's over there?
Soldiers On, yeah.
Yeah. Are you involved with, are you involved with any of the housing units that are being considered over there?
No. No, I've heard about it, but I haven't had any involvement in it.
Any questions for us that we could answer?
The, you mentioned the wage of, what is the wage?
Two seventy-one.
Say it again, please?
Two seventy-one, I believe.
It's a salary, it's weekly.
Okay.
Yeah, bi-weekly, two seventy-one, bi-weekly. I don't know whether that, the position is a salary, so it doesn't have, makes you have an hourly wage assignment.
No, it's all hourly, it's a salary.
So, all right. You heard the discussion about we have somebody overseas who wants to come back and apply for that.
Right.
So, we're actually probably going to stretch this out a little longer than, we may stretch it out a little longer than we intended. But we need to have somebody on board by, what's the date, Reggie?
March, Irving.
About March.
When can you start?
We should be, should be done by the end of February.
I don't mind having a few weeks.
A few weeks of retirement before you start?
Yeah, you may not want to come back.
Might get used to it. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Reggie, do you have the CV for the one that's not here? I just took a sneaky peekie.
Mr. Felty has withdrawn his application.
Oh, that's why Mr. Felty's not here. So, then we have some time?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Felty has withdrawn his application, so we now have some time to go back to the agenda. We do, on the agenda, I want to take care of it before we forget, is that letter from PBPC?
Jim Brennan.
Jim Brennan, do we have that, Reg?
Yes, it's in the last page.
Last page. David, last page of your packet.
The last page of the packet, of the packet or the interview?
Stop.
Packet. Which is on the last page, they tore it all apart, trying to read it.
We were approached by Conservation, right? To get the PBPC involved in the rail trail. And while we had an agenda item that seemed to cover it last week, and we took action, we wanted to reconsider it this week with a specific agenda item and ratify our action from last week. So that there would be no, no problems with the, with the request. And we're requesting procurement and management by PBPC, a licensed environmental consultant who will conduct soil and groundwater sampling, analysis activities along the Greenway Corridor, proposed Greenway Corridor. Outputs, deliveries will include site assessment reports and cleanup planning documents that comply with U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and Mass Department of Environmental Protection. These reports are expected to eventually lead to a cleanup and redevelopment of some or all of the Southampton, proposed Southampton Greenway Corridor. Redevelopment of this rail corridor will lead to economic, environmental, and quality of life benefits for the residents. So...
How much?
Five percent in-kind service.
What does that mean?
Means that the Conservation Commission, when they work with them, their time will be added up to equal five percent match in-kind service, which means their labor will be free, but they'll get credit for it in the dollar value toward our in-kind ser, our five percent match.
So, dollar value. How much does it cost the town to do the survey? Do we know?
No. That, that has to be determined after it goes out to bid.
Okay.
Because they have to go out to bid and get free bonafide consultants that are background in environmental sciences.
So, this is just saying...
They're going to go after, they have a grant to go after that, do that. And there is some grant money in there to pay for that. And that, in order to do it, we have to come up with a five percent in-kind match. In-kind can be, we can give them cash, or we can give them labor, or we can give them material.
All right, so Conservation's going to match that in-kind match. They're going to do the work, and we're waiting for a grant to cover the cost.
Correct.
Does that sum it up?
Yeah.
And we didn't have the grant, if you don't get the grant, how much is it going to cost?
Well, we're not doing it.
If we don't get the grant, we don't do the corridor.
I thought we already got the...
We have a grant, but we have to, we have the grant, you two are talking a different grant.
Yeah.
The grant for the railroad has to be done by June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. This one is an ongoing grant that Pioneer Valley Plan, Planning is, have done for the communities, and we're eligible for it. And that, in order to be eligible, we have to send a letter from the Select Board asking for it.
Okay.
And they open it up on our behalf, and part of the stipulations are that we come up with an in-kind match of equal to five percent of the total value.
And Charlie and the gang will take the five percent.
And they were here last week, and we had an agenda item that seemed, came close to fitting it. And luckily, we took action last week based on the fact that it did come close, but we, because we were afraid we wouldn't have it in a quorum this week. So, we put it on this week's agenda just to ratify the action that we took.
And what do you need for a motion, sir?
Motion to ratify the action of, of...
Last week.
Last week.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we have to go back to the top of the agenda.
Thanks for explaining to the slow guy.
You're on, man. You're under duress.
Just make sure you keep yourself under your, your own duress. All right, we did the payroll warrant this week. How about approval of minutes?
Do we have it?
They're not in your packet.
Oh, they're not here, so we got them, okay. Bill warrants, nothing. PCFs, nothing. PRFs, nothing. Disability, nothing. Reappointments?
There is a bill warrant, but we don't, I mean, a payroll warrant, there's a payroll warrant.
Payroll warrant, I, yeah, we signed that before. We have an email correspondence from Don Snyder, who expressed interest in the Public Safety Complex. Is, is his letter in here, Reggie?
No, it was just a basic, I did not put him in your packet.
Oh, it's just, oh, it's email correspondence.
Is it Don want to be involved?
Yeah, he wants to be on the Public Safety Complex. We still have an opening there, right?
Make a motion to offer it up to Don, if you'd like to have it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Don's been on a lot of committees in town. One-day licenses, nothing. Town owner agreements, nothing. February twelfth is our next meeting? Yes. But in the meantime, we have February fifth is special town meeting. February nineteenth is all boards meeting. When did we say we were going to do that video? We picked a day that we...
I think you picked next week.
Next week.
What video?
Actually, I'm sorry, I think it was for this week.
Is it timed?
We talked about it last week for this week.
All right, so we'll pick another, we got to do it soon, though.
Okay.
So, let's do it. It, it has to be the twelfth. What else is on the twelfth?
What is the video?
The video that we have to watch as a result of that open meeting law.
And we weren't on the board with that fence guard?
You still have to go.
Okay.
Yeah, make sure you were, weren't you on that?
No, I wasn't on, he wasn't on.
If I had been around, I would advise otherwise.
I think we should just do it and say it's done.
Well, we're going to put it, the thought was we would do the video here at the meeting, do it all at one time, so everybody gets credit.
Okay.
So...
So, as far as your twelfth, it's open?
That's it, then the first thirty minutes of it...
What, your diligence will be there?
Will be that.
And how are we going to watch it? Is that thing working?
No. We'll watch it on the...
Pads?
By pads.
All right. And then we can all witness the fact that we all watched it. And the nineteenth is all boards and committees meeting. Select Board updates, Fire Chief's job description.
Is that done?
I did not complete it.
Oh. I saw it, Bill, and I saw that it was going to be done.
I'm sorry.
When do you think it can be done?
Next week. Well, no, because you guys are meeting at your special town meetings, so the week after.
No.
Are we meeting before the special town meeting?
Well, we can talk about the thing, we, we can, we can...
I hate to have to keep going out.
No, no, but I was just saying, we, you don't even have a Todd version, we, we agreed that we were going to, you talked to Mater and Mater's...
Reggie talked to the Fire Marshal.
Can you just send him to Mike? Mike, I sent it to the whole board, but Mike was supposed to say the...
I have the email. Can I pick a moment?
No, I didn't. That was what you guys discussed.
Oh, all right. But we talked about, Reggie talked to the Fire Marshal, Ed talked to Mater, and the decision was that...
They were the same.
To remove the educational degree requirement, but to substitute two incentives, three incentives?
I think I might have them here.
It's like a Fire Chief credential training that is only offered to Fire Chiefs.
Sitting Fire Chief, yeah.
Yeah. And the State Marshal recommended we put it in, you know, where they get that training completed within a year.
There was another thing too, is once he was appointed, he was required to go for thirteen weeks of training for the best management practices of a Fire Chief.
Right.
There were two.
And then wasn't there NIMs?
Yeah, there was another one, I'm just trying to think what it was.
What, they wanted NIMs three hundred?
Well, NIMs and three, three, three hundred, four hundred, which was, it's pretty much required anyway, but, but there was a third thing that... Certification classes of a sitting chief should be taken. It was a certification that he had to get and maintain, and we gave him a year to do that.
So, the thought was we would take that and incorporate it into the job description and then post that.
Okay.
We were removing the educational component and adding those requirements, I don't want to say the future requirements, but...
Minimum requirements.
Minimum requirements.
Okay.
So...
When will that document be put together, by next Tuesday?
Why don't we...
Do I schedule a meeting?
Ten, fifteen minutes early and...
Look at it, I think we should, I'd like to get the ball moving, if we could.
On the fifth.
You'll email it to us?
Well, yeah, so get it out to us.
Because we'll have a payroll warrant, no, we'll have a bills warrant too, we can pay.
So, post a meeting fifteen minutes prior and then, but also, you know, email that out to us if you could, please, thanks, Reggie.
And if anything else comes up, Reggie, put it on there too.
Right, while I'm thinking of it. One of the articles on the warrant is to, Article Three talks about fund collective bargaining agreement with the Police Dispatchers Union.
That's right, too.
If we, if we pull that or pass that over...
Pass that over and stop.
Pass that over, then it's really, the town did not vote on to do that.
Didn't, we didn't accept that contract.
Well, no, we, we didn't accept part of it.
Yeah, but I mean, they're not...
The whole thing away?
Well, no, it's not big... No, but the town hasn't done it. The exact, they haven't voted on it, to fund it, all right? I know it's a question to toss that, because if they, I mean, I really kind of just disappoint at all.
We could vote to pass that over. Yeah, I agree with you.
I'm disappointed, you know?
Lock it in rather than locking in with a town meeting vote.
Well, we should tell David to let the rep know that, you know, that's a possibility.
We should talk to town council.
Town, town council, that, what, what that entails, if we...
Town council, have they talked to town council about this vacation thing?
It's in your packet, under your agenda, it's in your agenda packets marked Unions. And then it says Dispatchers.
But have we talked to town council?
We did, their, his response is in there.
Oh.
Pertaining, I didn't talk to him about the article being on the warrant.
But that's...
Pertaining to the whole vacation one, yes.
They reviewed the warrant, all right?
Yes.
Ask him, would you, I, I can't, because over the next couple of days, can you call him and ask him what would be the consequences if we pulled that?
We pass it off.
That situation being as it is, that we're deciding to resist the movement.
Okay.
Or pass it over until, until it's resolved.
Until it's resolved.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't, the laws...
No, that's a good catch, David. What's the next thing?
Going back to the Fire Chief, I'm going to post your meeting, six fifteen, review, send you guys the job description.
Yeah.
Anything else comes up, I'll put it on there.
Okay, so six forty-five is...
Is anybody else coming in tonight to join the board? No, go.
Nobody's coming else tonight?
No.
Nobody tonight? Oh, that's cool, I thought we had the whole night to do this, but, okay.
What?
There's no more, no more interviews?
Interviews.
Yeah, there are. Yeah, we're headed again now.
I don't know if I could actually stay.
Six forty-five. All right, let me finish this then, we're killing time here. Special town meeting motions.
These are, they should be...
Those are the last three pages.
Last three pages.
Actually, in, for the iPad, it's in the agenda under special town meeting motions. It's separate.
Oh, okay. I found it. I'm proud of myself. So, we have Article One, repair or replace the William Norris Roof.
They're going to be here, right?
Yes.
Who's going to talk on that?
School committee.
Article Two, fund the police officers, we don't have a problem with that one.
No.
Article Three, police dispatchers, that's the question we're going to ask town council, whether we pass that over. Article Four is the, a police department vest for three thousand dollars. Article Five is amend the ambulance budget to give everyone the raise. Three thousand dollars, six is the almanac budget for six, three, for three. Highway Department, Article Seven is Highway Department. Article Eight is to transfer funds from the ambulance line to EMT wage line. And Article Nine is the fund the police emergency equipment response. Were you here last week, David?
Yeah, ballistic shields and stuff.
Yeah, ballistic shields and that, okay. Anybody got any questions on that?
As long as we have people to speak for each individual articles. So, it looks like the school committee needs to be there, almanacs need to be there, and And Chief Sylvanell needs to be there.
I hope it's a better night than what you predicted.
Excuse me?
But that's a week out. Let me change.
On the dollar amount as to what's coming out of free cash, and again, it's a separate item under your Select Board agenda of the... it's 99, 739 from free cash.
Mm-hmm.
So, it still is us 200,000 free cash?
304, 260.
Okay, so...
It's still estimated, though.
Did you get letters from DOR?
Not yet.
Okay. And you think they're going to be in by then?
I believe so.
Oh, discussion items. This is something I wanted to talk with you guys. We've had four, I assume four. Two I know for sure because they came as emails to me. And two sealed envelopes with, I'm assuming, town administrator or job applicants. I have not looked at those or reviewed those or opened the envelopes. How do you want to handle the... they're coming to my house.
Oh, they're coming to your house?
Yeah. How do you want to handle either opening them or distributing them, or what would you like to do?
I know there's a little bit of concern about the whole process, so would you... they're still not open, right?
Two of them came as emails, so they're...
Oh, okay.
I printed them.
All right.
I had to print them. Two of them have come and sealed envelopes, which I have just left sealed in my house.
Do you want to just, you know, make time in the agenda?
What's the... when's the deadline?
February 28th.
We have plenty of time.
March, the first meeting in March.
Yeah, but do you want to do something with those beforehand, before we get them all, or do you want to just wait?
I want to get them all. That's my suggestion.
All right. I didn't want to do anything with them.
I mean, that's what Dave wants.
No, I think just open them all at once.
All right. I just didn't want to do anything with them. I wanted to discuss. I hadn't thought of what I was going to do with them as they came to my house. So, I've just been putting them aside and...
Does Mary want to make copies and collate on this stuff?
I would ask Mary, maybe, no.
No, I would say following meeting, bring them in.
I mean, obviously, the two that came as emails are open and I can...
And Mike, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, you have total discretion.
Yeah. I would just assume not open them until everybody's in one place.
Mm-hmm.
You know, to keep that as a complete process. So, now we've decided the Fire Chief's credentials and what are we going to try and do for a schedule for posting the Fire Chief position?
We're going to agree on it next Tuesday and then we're going to post it.
Well, the other question is, what's your salary? What are you setting... is it supposed to go back to the Personnel Board?
Sorry, I have to score.
Because they changed the educational requirement.
Does it have to be rescored?
It doesn't have to, but, you know, if you want it to, we can score it.
I think we should probably rescore it with the fact that we've taken the educational requirements out of it, or some of them. I'm not saying all of them.
I understand what you're saying, but I don't think we have that education requirement in there because...
He didn't have it.
That's right.
So, no.
But I mean, I have no problem doing that.
Do you recall what the state said when we first posted? Remember, we had to be posted it the first time? We went doing it that we put in... now, I don't remember which way it's supposed to go. We put in a range, or we put in a salary, or something like that. We had to do it a different way and...
No, I don't remember.
Do you remember that? Because I'm not just guiding. If we could put it in as a range, we put it as a range.
Well, I would feel better putting in a range because then if you've got somebody that came in with all of these credentials, you might want to give him a higher starting salary than someone who came in and had to achieve these credentials.
I just don't recall.
Do we have the scoring on that?
No.
Do we know what the original position was for when we posted it years ago?
Fifty-two, if I'm not mistaken.
No. I remember we did it. We did. We ended up scoring for like 52 or 54. You came back and asked us to reconsider the fees and everything was in there.
Yeah.
There was fees involved. There was stipends. We went back and we...
And there was more.
We came back. There was more. And then there was overtime status and stuff. You got moved up and up and up.
If we don't have a... if we don't have a range, and I think we just got to go get scored so that we do know what the range is.
That's fine.
I think... because if we're shooting, we're just guessing at this point in time what salary. And that's right. There was a salary put on it and then I forget why.
We were off by about 2,000 from where you were.
Right, yeah. And we had to change it. So, I think at this point in time, I would suggest that we rescore the position to get a firm.
So, Tuesday, next Tuesday, we'll just look at it, agree on it, and then send it to the BQB to be scored.
Scored.
When do they meet next, PQB?
Thursday, is it?
So, it could be several weeks later.
I think it's in two weeks. Two weeks. All right. All right, so that's the plan then.
Okay.
All right, so we talked about the town administrative position. No update on Brickyard Road, moving. Haven't heard back from them. Do we send Mr. Hyde his vacation?
No. I'm waiting for Joe Fair to send a cover letter.
Okay.
If we need a cover letter. The more I look at it, we have a letter already. And I talked to him about it. Either the day before... day last Tuesday or the day after, Joe said he would do it.
Okay.
He didn't think we needed it, but he said we'd do it.
All right, Hyde on vacation. Highway Superintendent's job description. Saw your picture in the paper the other day.
It's a great picture.
Doesn't adjust us, huh? So, we... I forget. So, we got that. Building Inspector's position. And that really does it all, doesn't it? Has... is there a need to have the building inspector have an overlap with the new person, which I'm just going to discuss this because I think it's important that we have somebody be here overlapping at least a month or two. Right. I think we probably would like that on all positions unless the guy's coming in with an experienced building inspector. But even that, just to know his way around.
From what Rich has explained, you're looking for a building commissioner because that's where Rich is, correct?
That was... but how I was explained by Rich and Diane Schindler, that was the new term they wanted to use.
What's the significance of the term?
There's no change.
There's trainings with the state. All the commissioners in Massachusetts, building commissioners, are listed on the state website, so...
But building inspectors aren't?
Well, I think it's a... The point is you have to have certain... like a small town like this is one level of inspectors. And then a city like East Hampton, because it's more four or five-story buildings, you need another type of inspector. Then you get to structural, real structural buildings like, you know, arcades and movie theaters where there's mass amount of people. And you need to know and have a lot more experience. I think they're all called commissioners if you're not right.
There's a difference.
Well, commissioner might be the head person. It might be times with several people underneath them.
Right, so...
So, what we always had was a building inspector. But when it came to Southampton, you still need a commissioner for each city of the town.
Right, so we were using Holyoke as like a supervisor and then Rich was like the inspector. There wasn't someone else. And now you worked under their guise and if there was an issue that Rich was supposed to...
I think like a small town like this, there will be one in the same... you'd be one in the same person.
But you always need that other person with the other stuff that we work with.
With a buck stop supposedly.
So, now you guys got me confused.
What are you looking for? Are you looking for an inspector or...
Whatever the state requires, which I think is going to require, basically on what I was told from Diane and then Rich. Rich at the time said that was the thing we had to do.
Commissioner.
We need a commissioner, which is, in this case, it's the same person as a building inspector.
But a commissioner is going to draw a...
Or if you go to a bigger town, it'd be a commissioner and there'd be two assistants or something like that. Those would be building inspectors.
By calling him a commissioner, we are not creating a new position, are we?
No.
No.
Well, we're going to be paying them more money. I think the savings was to have another commissioner outside the town of Southampton and pay an inspector's salary. And the job still gets done. And then the inspector has a difficulty. He's supposed to call the commissioner.
I vaguely remember something like that.
So, you're not paying... you don't need all the training of the commissioners.
Well, let me back up a bit. I know for a fact that the state gets called in on several occasions to deal with a conflict between the commissioner and the state.
You haven't had that yet?
Yes, we have.
We have?
Yes.
Well, I didn't know about it.
All right, so where do we go with this?
I don't know if we're supposed to have it as a commissioner. I was always led to believe that when that was decided. I don't know if you know that. You know?